A regular session of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. The time is 7:05. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Josh Daley.
Here.
Peter DiStefano.
Here.
Robin Pothier.
Here.
And Maria Mack is here. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. This consists of approval of minutes from October 13, 2022 work session and October 26, 2022 regular session. Since we did not receive a hard copy of the agenda, board members, I don't believe everyone has had a chance to read through the minutes, so I would suggest that we table these to a future meeting if anyone would like to make that motion. Thank you, Peter. We have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Joe. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a public informational meeting, public hearing, major multi-household land development conceptual master plan, Magnolia Lane, continued from October 26, 2021. The applicant has requested that this hearing be continued to December. What is our—Jamie, do you have our meeting date for December? December 14th. Would someone like to make a motion to continue this item?
I'll make that motion to continue that item until the December 14th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Joe, a second from Paul. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So if anyone is here for Magnolia Lane, it is continued until our December meeting, which is on the 14th. Our next agenda item is development plan review, public hearing, development plan review advisory to the zoning board, Union Fire Mattoonik Station 7, continued from 10 26 21. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Margaret Hogan, the solicitor for the Union Fire District of South Kingstown. Just one quick item before I turn over the presentation to your acting town manager, and that is in your draft minutes that you were just reviewing, and I know you've tabled them to next month, but the draft minutes suggest that the application was for the fire station only, and it is not. It is for the fire station as well as the emergency services building, and I wanted to make that correction on the record.
Thank you. We'll be sure those are corrected.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Ms. Murphy, who is here to present the statistics that the board requested at its last meeting. Thank you.
Welcome, Terri.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Our EMS chief Stanley could not be here with us this evening because he is out of state. However, he has provided a presentation that will address some of the questions posed by the planning board members as well as members of the public. The information and the data will help to substantiate the town's need for an EMS bay to service the south and west regions of town. I'd also like to recognize the Union Fire District for working with the town to address the need by offering their space for construction of a bay at the Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road Station. After reading and hearing much public comment on this particular project, I believe there are actually very few people who disagree with the idea of locating an EMS facility in the southern portion of town. That being said, it is important to provide the supportive data for this, so this presentation that Jamie is pulling up now should help to do that. He's doing two jobs this evening. In the meantime, I could probably get started with some background information that the opening slides present. First of all, I believe most of you are aware of our EMS operation. We have actually two transport ambulances. We have one located at the Public Safety Complex on Kingstown Road, and we have a second located at the Public Services Building off of Route 1. And we have one non-transport vehicle, which is a supervisor vehicle, which contains all of the same medical response equipment that an ambulance does. It just is not—it doesn't provide transport for stretchers. Okay, so we can move on from that slide. Just finish that. So I know you've heard from Chief Stanley in the past as well in terms of what the operational challenges are for the EMS division, and they're pretty obvious, most of them. You know, we have an increase in call volume, which we'll get into that data a little further into the presentation, which affects response time. We have limited resources in the form of two paramedic vehicles. We also have an aging population, as we know, in South Kingstown. And of course, our town geographically is the second largest in the state, and so from a response time perspective, that creates problems when there's only two vehicles on So we talked about increase in call volume, and right now, we're seeing an average of 11 to 14 calls on average per day for the EMS responses. I'm looking at the wrong slide. Skipped one on me. We have about 49 extra calls per month as it stands now, and you'll see between 2019 and 2021, the differential in the average calls per month from 275 to currently in 2021, 304 calls per month to date through the month of October. One item to point out is in 2020, we did have a decrease in call volume due to the COVID-19 lockdown and folks fearful of actually utilizing EMS services and being transported to medical facilities. So what this slide shows in detail, if you look at that red bar, that is 2021 call volume. And this is a seven-year, seven-years' worth of data from 2015 almost through, obviously, the end of this year. And between 2015 and 2019, the call volume went up by 9% during that timeframe. We're on track in 2021 to see that percentage up from 2015 to 2021 by year-end by 17%. You'll notice at the end of the graph that the red line plummets. That's because we're not through with the month of November, and we're projecting the year-end to be much higher than where we were at this time last year. So there's clearly the additional workload on our EMS staff, and we have not expanded. We simply—we have the two paramedic vehicles and the two stations that we work out of. Jamie, you can—so you can see by this bar graph that this is the same data reflected in a different way. We are not finished with 2021, and we're already at 3,257 calls. We have a month and a half left about. Again, it's clear the 2020 is the anomaly with COVID-19, but it's very clear that there is an increase in call volume for EMS services within town. And then if we look at the response times in terms of standards, we're looking at the standards for advanced life support, which is a paramedic level. For South Kingstown is classified as an urban setting, and that is through the lens of the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services, which is the reporting agency for EMS services. Eight minutes and 59 seconds is the standard by which we are setting our goal, and the goal is to meet that standard 90% of the time. Currently, we are meeting that standard 66% of the time. And specific to cardiac arrest cases, chances of survival are much lower when we exceed the 10-minute mark for response. So that's something to bear in mind as we look at some of the other data as we move Again, response times—okay, so this is—I just explained the Census Bureau and Centers for Medicare and Medicaid on the billing. In terms of what we consider as a community, I think this is fairly obvious, but is what is our community willing to accept for response times for all of our residents? And what are we willing to pay to meet the desired response times? That our goal would be, according to Chief Stanley, to meet that eight-minute, 59-second mark 90% of the time that they're called out. Again, this is relatively obvious, but in terms of why response times are important, it's obviously related to the expedient treatment of our residents who may or may not be in a life-threatening situation. It also allows for quicker transport to hospitals for treatment of the critical care types of illnesses, heart attacks, strokes, trauma, and pediatric emergencies. And we also have to bear in mind that many of these transports, critical transports, end up having to be transported to Rhode Island Hospital or Kent Hospital, depending So again, the challenges have been stated. I think, again, they're fairly obvious. If we don't have enough transport vehicles, if we don't have enough staff, if we don't have enough equipment, that all translates to an issue for our response times. High call volume, we have limited units to respond. When there's hospital diversions, if South County Hospital has to divert an ambulance, then that ambulance needs to go to Westerly or Kent or Rhode Island. And then, you know, the fact that ambulances have to have time to then return from wherever they're transporting patients. Things that are out of our control, weather, I mean, certainly an issue and can be a challenge, particularly in the winter. Population surges, so in the summertime particularly for our community, that becomes a challenge. And of course, the size of our town. Again, speed, we certainly want to get people quickly to medical facilities, but there's also, you know, a level of care that needs to be taken when transporting patients. So as I mentioned previously, we have a 66% success rate in response times under eight minutes and 59 seconds. And from November last year to November this year, there were 2,581 calls. So of that, 66% of the time, we met or exceeded the threshold. We really want to be at 90%. I realize this is a difficult graph to take a look at on the monitors, but this is essentially a report that is run directly from our data management system that the EMS department uses, and what it reflects is that, basically, the statistic that I just referred you to, which is 66% of the time, we are—our EMS personnel are able to respond in under eight minutes and 59 seconds. And in the red area up top, you'll see those spikes that exceed that red dotted line. Those are the times where we're not able to meet that goal. More specifically, Chief Stanley has provided, as an example, a list of locations that are particular to the southern area of town, and these—there are a total of 53 calls, and these are critical care calls. These are calls that have to do with cardiac arrest or trauma or stroke. And the response times are in the right-hand column. The average response times—response time for these calls is 14.6 minutes, I believe, which, you know, certainly exceeds where we'd like to be. And all of these locations are in the southern area of town. And then we have just an age demographic in terms of where we're responding or what groups we're responding to, and obviously, it tends to be the older population, and we can see that very clearly here. And Craig has some information too that'll show us further into the slideshow what that reflects. But in the southern area of South Kingstown, there tends to be an older population in that area, retirees. I would venture to guess—I don't have that exact number, but you can see 53% are aged 60 to aged 89. And then specifically with regard to cardiac arrest data, we can see that our personnel has responded 173 times since 2017. The average cardiac arrest patient is 68 years old, and majority of cardiac arrest calls are residential, so people are generally in their home setting. So the South Kingstown census tract of 513.02, which is the East Mattoonik, Mattoonik and Green Hill area, there were—EMS responded to 30 cardiac arrests during that time, and that equates to 8.2 cardiac arrests per 1,000 residents in that census tract. And that happens to be the largest number of cardiac arrest responses—that area of town happens to be the largest. This particular map and the yellow and red dots probably is the most illustrative of the need in the southern area of town. If you can't see it up in the legend in the right, top-right corner of the slide, those dots reflect response times. So the smallest yellow dots are between—from one to five minutes response. The second size is six to 10 minutes. The third largest yellow dot is 11 to 15 minutes. And then the red—large red dot reflects 16 to 23 minutes in response times. And clearly, you can see—and these are all critical care responses. These are not every response to EMS, but they are the critical care responses where they're transporting to a hospital or a medical facility. That the southern area of town certainly is in need of some shoring up in terms of how quickly we can get to residents in that part of town. And then this map reflects three circles that are on the map that represent a three-mile radius, response radius from the current EMS stations, one at Public Services, one at Public Safety, and then the red one is the proposed site at the Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road Station with a three-mile radius that would cover the vast majority of the southern Going forward in the next fiscal year, the EMS department is requesting a third ambulance. This is part of their capital improvement program. This has been a strategic plan, so they're requesting not only the vehicle but also the personnel to handle the increase in call volume and locate a new unit eventually in the southern portion of town in the Route 1 corridor to reduce the response times. And then the five-year plan includes adding a fourth ambulance in the West Kingston area, which you could see on the map, but that was still an area that would need attention in terms of response times. And this is—I'll just close with this particular quote that Chief Stanley felt was appropriate. I'll read it, since I probably can't read it from there. It says, "It doesn't take a PhD to discern that outcomes are often positively influenced by EMS systems that consistently deliver a predictable response time. In the simplest of terms, when you're thirsty, you don't need to know that the scientific composition of water includes organic and inorganic materials, dissolved gases, nutrients, inorganic salts, trace elements, heavy metals, and potentially toxic chemicals. You simply turn on the tap and expect a response. The same is true with EMS. Detailed clinical research isn't needed to know what 911 callers expect. EMS customers universally perceive value in a rapid intervention for loved ones. Long response times often negatively affect seen interactions and perceptions of care, and they are frequently the cause of public complaints. In the absence of a regulatory or defined system standard, court proceedings provide ultimate guidance." And that's a quote from Jay Fitch, Ph.D., founder of Fitch and Associates, a leading resource for EMS and public safety organizations. So that is really the data that we're able to provide. It's pretty high-level, but I think it does get the point across that there is a great void in the area of the southern end of town. I understand that the planning board's role is not to decide whether or not that's necessary, but you're to focus on the site itself and whether that site is appropriate for the plans that are presented before you. But it is a frame of reference for the planning board and for the public to understand that there is, in fact, data that supports the need for a third EMS bay and paramedic vehicle in the southern area of town. Happy to answer any questions. I'd like to thank Chief Stanley for providing—gathering and providing this information for the planning board and for the public.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from board members? Josh?
Thank you very much for that and Chief Stanley for that as well, the data. One piece of data, and I know what we have is what we have right now, but what I was hoping to see was the response—the—we saw the call-response rates by particular areas that he pulled out, but the call volume—is that data—I don't know. I'm left to kind of extrapolate that, like, if it's an older area of town, that probably the call volume is even higher there in terms of the spike. But is it—do you have that data broken down? There's an overall increase in call volume. Do you have it broken down by that geography, southern part of town?
We—in terms of demographics, you mean? Just that specific area?
Yeah, just in terms of call volume for that area. Like, you talked about the overall increase in call volume.
Right.
For the town.
Right.
And sort of narrowing it down. And I don't want to assume this, but my assumption is it's skewing older and the calls are skewing older as well.
Right, right.
So it would seem that that call volume spike might even be higher in the southern part of town.
I don't have that data in front of me, but I will see if we can gather that. I would venture to say that your assumption is fairly accurate, as we saw in the demographics that the people who need the most EMS response are over 60.
Any other questions from board members? Ms. Hogan, would you like to proceed?
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no additional direct testimony to present. We do have our architect and engineer here to answer any lingering questions that the board may have, and when you're concluded with that, I'd like the opportunity to make closing remarks.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Questions from board members related to architecture, engineering, any of the issues related to the site plan? Susan?
Make sure your mic is turned on. Hi, I'm Susan Axelrod. I have a question, I think, regarding the architecture of the site. Is there someone I could ask a couple of questions for about the architecture? Thank you.
No, no, I haven't.
No, we're not quasi-judicial.
I'm John Aronian from the Aronian and Associates, the architects for the project.
Thank you, and I'm not sure if you are the right person to ask some questions about, but I am looking at the latest proposal that I have in front of me, and one of the things that makes me uncomfortable voting for this project in its present format is the amount of pavement on the site, the amount of roof lines and imperious surfaces, the lack of setbacks from neighboring properties, the lack of buffers, the lack of interior landscaping. And I'd like—I guess someone to explain to me why—and if you know this—the EMS building is a separate structure from the firehouse, because they appear to me to be redundant, where both buildings have bedrooms, kitchen, living space, bathrooms, and other— you know, with living quarters. And I wonder if they could have been combined, and either the ambulance may be much smaller on the back of the footprint of the property, or the ambulance have been parked underneath the firehouse, since there's a full-size, you know, overhead garage door underneath the firehouse. And I'd also like to understand why we have a drive-through format, which has necessitated the paving of the majority of the lot, as opposed to flipping off the backup beeping and backing into a bay, which would require less paving. So yes, I'm not sure who the questions are.
Just going to switch witnesses, Ms. Axelrod.
When it comes to pavement.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Madam Chair, just for the record, Joe Casali, registered professional engineer, offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. Initial renditions of the building did have the ambulance underneath, and it was at the request of the abutters that we were to eliminate that. And it's an expensive elimination, but we did it predominantly so— did it predominantly so that we would not be shining the lights of the ambulance into the abutting property. So, one of the original architectural plans actually showed it that way. Same for the drive-through, excuse me, we initially had the plan that you would be able to back the ambulance into the space, but because of the sound and what we heard at some of our initial meetings with the abutters, we had initial Zoom meetings with the Union Fire District and the abutters, we eliminated that for noise. So, what you see is more expensive to build, and it's a direct correlation of our conversations to alleviate the concerns of the abutters, specifically on sound and noise. And as for pavement, we do have a portion of this site paved, but we need to put that in perspective. I believe the pavement is about 24,000, 25,000 square feet. So, this is not like we're paving a Walmart parking lot here. This is about a half acre. But most importantly, most importantly, the amount of pavement needs to be correlated with the increase in runoff. We actually have a decrease in runoff. We actually have a decrease in the volume of stormwater leaving the site. So, we have not only comported to the local and state regulations, we've blown them away in terms of drainage. I don't know how else to explain it. We've blown them away. We not only have a decrease in the peak volumes, we have decrease in attenuations, we have increases in water quality. So, you have to look at both sides. We did need to pave this site and put roofs on top of these foundations, but what we've done to remediate that is remarkable. And I, there's no higher standard we can meet. So, from a drainage standpoint, I hope I've made you feel comfortable. From a sound and noise standpoint, I hope you understand why we did what we did. It was in direct relation to the abutters.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie, could you just put the site plan up on the monitor for us?
So I'm pretty sure that whatever I read online is probably not real. But when I Googled this, it appeared that from an ambulance website, I could see that ambulances have the ability to flip off that backup beeper, as long as there's someone to make sure they don't back over someone. Is that indeed where they can control the backup beeping?
I mean, you can always override a safety provision, but is that responsible?
I think it would be if you had someone to make sure you didn't back over something.
As a designer, I weigh health, safety, and welfare issues differently than I do noise and sound and drainage. They are very important issues, but health, safety, and welfare issues trump everything. And so, you know, from a noise standpoint, that was one of the concerns we heard from multiple applicants, and that's why we have the site as a drive-through. Forcing them to turn off that beeper would save maybe, when you look in relation to the parking spaces that are there and the septic, I think a real minimal amount of pavement. Because, don't forget, you still need to get to those four parking spaces to the rear. One of the reasons we're before the zoning board is the code requires 16 spaces, and we've reduced that to 10, one of them being handicap compliant. So, you know, as it stands today, I mean, now we're reducing about maybe 1,000 or 2,000 square feet of impervious area. When we know we have decreases in runoff, respectfully, I can't agree with that.
Why was the idea of having the ambulance bay underneath a firehouse abandoned?
Because the residents next door did not want to see the lights as that ambulance was to pull out. We initially offered it. It would have worked with our program and the way our building is, but if that was their desire, we completely changed and went into what you see here. There were multiple things that were changed. The location of the building, we had it on the east side, the west side, we had it further south or closest to the entrance. We had them as one building. Very many iterations in spirit of cooperation and being good neighbors. I don't know how else to answer that. Respectfully, some of these questions we addressed six and eight months ago.
So my last question, then, is why are the living quarters, the sleeping quarters, the kitchens, and the bathrooms in two separate buildings, as opposed to community bunking together?
Well, now, they have to be because of the split. If they were together, we would have had more economies of scale. But now you're, you know, now you're adding to response time in inclement weather, transporting people to and from buildings. When the service is split, that's when we have, we do have redundancies. We acknowledge that. This is going to be more expensive for us to build from hardscape, from foundations, from the septic system, from the domestic and fire protection that may go into these buildings, and the redundancies in some of the common elements, such as the bunking. But we have done that in spirit of cooperation with those neighbors. What you see here is a reflection of that. You know, I don't know how many architectural renditions there were. There was at least eight, if not 12. Again, I think respectfully, we had this conversation, Mr. Rabbit had brought it to our attention. When you move one element, you end up with another problem. You know, I just, it's not as easy as it may seem with a site this thin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members? We have received a letter this evening that was sent yesterday to the Director of Planning from David Kotay. I believe he is here in the audience this evening and may wish to speak to that. If there are no questions at this time, I would entertain anyone who wishes to speak to this application this evening. Please come up to the mic and state your name for the record.
Dave Kotay Wakefield. Could you bring up the map of the town, please? I'd like to say that the data, the analysis from Chief Stanley and from the town manager, that was excellent. Really, really appreciate it. So, and I'm up here, it's all about the data. So let's get the data, let's get the EMS response time down, and let's locate it where it should be located, based on the data. So, no, not that one. Hold that one.
So I do have a question, and there was clarification. I thought there were 2,541 calls, but then I saw so far there's 3,257 calls in the last year. So, the year's not over. So let's round it up. Let's do simple math. Let's round it up to 4,000. 4,000 calls divided by two ambulances, that's 2,000 calls per ambulance. I'm doing averages. 2,000 divided by 365, I get five calls per day. And I've been hearing 10 to 18, I've been hearing different numbers, but just doing simple math, I'd say 4,000 calls, I'm getting five calls per day, based on that. I did ask, so I would have the accurate data. It would be helpful for all if we could take all 4,000 calls, put it in a spreadsheet, get the location where it is, the time of day, and the response time. And I did have, so when I was looking at some of the critical calls, the 53 critical calls that came in, I see only red down by the Mattoonik area, but Chickadee Hill Road or whatever, I saw a number of calls in the northern part of town. Okay, so there's definitely a lot of calls by the Charlestown area, way out in the West Kingston area, and it was over 16 minutes, so I don't know why there's not any red there. So, having said that, for the response time data, and when a call comes in, 911 phone rings, call is transferred to a medical call taker, call location is sent to the dispatcher. For the emergency medical dispatch, how long does the response time include from the time the 911 call comes in? Okay. So, I think it'd be helpful, because there could be issues with our dispatching. So let's say dispatching takes five minutes, or it takes a while to get to the actual ambulance. I think that's important. I think that's very important data. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, I did-
Terry, could you just restate your name?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Terry Murphy, interim town manager. I did have a conversation with Chief Stanley about that very valid question in terms of the phases of the call from 911 to arrival on the scene. We do not have the 911 data that would come from the state 911 facility. So we don't have it. We can certainly try to extrapolate that from the state.
But how long did it take for the dispatcher?
If you're going to have a back-and-forth conversation, you need to go back to the mic and restate your name, please.
I understand what you're asking, and we don't have, we do not have the call broken out by phases. We have the total response time from 911 to being on scene.
Thank you.
So back to, am I correct on the, did I do the math right with the 4,000, two ambulances, and it comes out to five calls per day? I'm just saying this, 4,000 calls. I'm okay. I'm just trying to understand.
So if you're going to ask a question, Mr. Kotay, and require a response, you need to allow that person giving the response to come back to the mic so that it's picked up on the record.
Madam Chair, may I have a suggestion as, yeah?
Yes. Perhaps if you finish with your questions, then we can get them all-
So, what I, what I'm seeing here is, okay, we need a third ambulance, okay? And what I recommended at the last meeting, let's get the third ambulance, put it at, or third or fourth ambulance, put it at the existing locations, and then check the response time. Because as Planning Board member Ms. Axelrod stated, the Mattoonik location, there's no scalability. If there's growth, we're back at square one, and we have to get a new EMS facility. What I would say, based on the data, and it would be great to plot, and I don't think that would be hard, plot all 4,000 calls where they are, because as the town grows and it's 57 miles, we're putting a facility at the furthest end where all the beach traffic is. Wouldn't it make sense to put it where the Tucker Town Fire Station is? Where the Tucker Town Fire Station landmass, it's seven times the size. Where Mattoonik is 31,000 square feet, Tucker Town is 219,000 square feet, seven times. And it's more centrally located, because based on the data, and I looked at the location, I Google mapped it, there are a lot of calls that are exceeding the response time, not only down by the beach, but up north as well. So I think it, let's put something central, let's put something central where it fits, where you don't have five building code violations that you have to get exceptions for. And then, then as our town grows, we're like, okay, if we put something at Mattoonik, now we have to put it somewhere else, because there's no way we're going to get a fourth ambulance. Let's put it somewhere where we can put a third, fourth, maybe fifth ambulance. And then as a trial run, to get the ball rolling, I drove into Perryville, the public safety building across from the Marina, the second one, and it's really easy to get in and out. There's no traffic lanes. You're on a highway, and you can go the speed limit, 55 miles an hour, but you can go, I mean, as fast as you want. But that allows you to get to areas of the town where needed. So I think, right now, if the data is right, 4,000 calls, and I upped it, there's five, on average, five calls per day per ambulance. So I think we should plot the data on a map and make the best decision based on the data. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Terry, do you, yes, if you have any other answers to Mr. Kotay's questions?
Just briefly, with an average of 4,000 calls a year, it's actually 11 calls a day. It's not as simple as breaking out a per ambulance, five calls per ambulance. Many times, those ambulances are either on a mutual aid call to another community. So I understand Mr. Kotay's point in averaging out, but it's simply, from an emergency services standpoint, it's not as simple as each ambulance has five calls a day. And they fluctuate greatly. There are some days where we have 18 calls that come in in the course of 24 hours, and seven of those calls, we may have needed other communities to come in and provide mutual aid. And I don't think I had the opportunity to mention that, or maybe I did. Currently, South Kingstown is receiving more mutual aid from our neighbors than we're able to provide back to our neighbors. So we need to be cognizant of that. We want there to be some type of equal sharing of the services, so that we're not overburdening our neighbors in terms of responding when our ambulances may be called out on calls in town or to other areas.
Thank you. That's helpful. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name's James Meyer. I'm looking at this map here, and I'm hearing about data in all those bits and pieces. But every data point has a person behind it. So let's start with the people that make up those red dots. Let's talk about the people in the yellow dots and where they're clustered, and the response times. We can average, do lots of averages, the average rate of this or that. You get an average, you get a mean, you get a median. But it doesn't take into account the specificity associated with the data. So I agree with Mr. Kotay. Let's disaggregate the data. Let's do an item analysis. Let's break it down and do a root cause analysis, which it sounds to me that the acting manager has done. Let's not inflate the numbers to 4,000 and say, there's a number, because then we're inflating data. Let's take the real, hard data and connect it with a person and a story. I can connect personally that years ago, when there was a fire on my farm down in South Kingstown, tragically, Mattoonik wasn't the first on the scene, and they're only three, two miles away. It was Cross Mills. It was Charlestown, because they got the call first, they were out the door first, because the population was there. So we talk about these- So, we talk about these, we gotta put the numbers to people, I'm sorry, I'm being a hypocrite, put the people first, and then associate the numbers. So, if there are 53 people who had critical care in South Kingston, in the southern part of the state, now is the time, given government funding, and the money that is coming through the pipeline. And it is to expand our services in this area, because this area down here is expanding. The other question that came up was response times between EMS phone call in and the time going out. And doing the cursory research that I did, sitting in the audience, the data is inconclusive, because there's not good data between when the time is received, and the call goes out. And the research shows it. So, all you can take is the data that's provided about when they go out, and the 8:59 is not eight minutes and 59 seconds, it's one second behind nine minutes. It's nine minutes to get emergency services in an urban area. But that doesn't take into account the millions of people who live in an urban area. Again, look at the people first, I beseech you, and then assign the story to the numbers. These numbers tell a story. The red says something very clearly, there is a need, there is a space, let's make it work efficiently, let's get the help to the people who need it, and then, if there's more help that's needed, north of the state, or north of, in, in, north, south Kingston, let's get them the help too, because the people here deserve it.
Thank you. Before we continue, I'm just wondering, Jamie and Amy, if you like, could you just clarify the role of the Planning Board in this development plan review, not only with regard to the fact that it's advisory to the zoning, but exactly what our purview is in this particular instance?
And again, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, and again, we do have legal counsel here, Amy Goines. Primarily, your role isn't a citing entity of whether or not a facility needs to be in a specific location. You actually have an entity who has decided a facility is being proposed for a specific property, that property contains two buildings, one for the Fire District, and one for the town's EMS services. So, your purview under the regulations is to evaluate the impacts specific to what's being proposed on the site. The use is permitted within the classification as governmental-institutional. Within the governmental-institutional zoning district, there are certain dimensional requirements with regards to building location, there is no building setback within the zone. There are provisions associated with parking and drive aisles, as well as parking dimensions. The applicant has requested relief from those, which is actually not relief granted by the Planning Board, it's actually relief that will need to be granted by the Zoning Commission in the form of a variance. So, primarily, your role is determine whether or not, based on your review of the site plan, whether you feel that the aspects associated with the development of this property are consistent with your recommendations, requirements, and make a recommendation to the Zoning Commission with regards to favorable, not favorable, favorable with conditions that you would like the Zoning Commission to impose on any future application. Staff has prepared a draft motion to that effect, with, I believe, seven conditions that are being recommended, based on previous conversations held by board members. There is potentially an alternative, based on conversations at your last meeting, with regards to if it was the purview of the board to only move forward one component of the project, which would be the Union Fire District without the EMS building. But again, from my understanding, based on discussion and perhaps consensus of the board members last month, that you were first entertaining a motion to move the project as it's been presented by the applicant with both buildings. The applicant, to their point, clarified that their application is for both Union Fire District and South Kingston's EMS building. They did propose what a split facility would look like, split being no EMS building, and just the Union Fire District, and how that would look on a site plan. You have that listed as Exhibit One, and Exhibit Two, being that split facility without EMS. So, again, you're not here wearing a hat for locating a facility. Your hat you're wearing tonight is site-specific with regards to the implications of the site as it relates to the development being proposed within the property bounds.
Thank you, Jamie. Any additional comments from legal counsel?
Just that, again, with your role being advisory, your review is required. The conditions of approval, if you choose to approve the site plan in one form or another, are really recommended conditions of approval to the zoning board.
To that point, Madam Chair, they're not binding on the zoning, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come up to the mic.
I'm currently Chairman of the Board of Wardens, the Union Fire District. But more importantly, I'm a citizen of this town, and there's been a lot of data spoken tonight, and the data is real. But I'll tell you a few things that don't come up on data. Each fire station has a circle drawn around it. The NFPA has a criteria, that the response time within that center of that circle. Now, the Union Fire District, in the Kingston Fire District, we pretty much meet that criteria, except for a very small portion in the southern end of town. I believe the same holds true with emergency services. Now, even adding the third rescue, probably won't meet that criteria for a while, but it'll certainly lessen the burden. The town of South Kingston also relies heavily for assistance from the Union Fire District. Some of those calls are medical assistance, when the rescue is not available. The tons go out for our hazard truck, which is a heavy-duty rescue truck, so to speak, does not provide life support, it does not provide transport. What it does do is, when there are licensed EMTs available, they act as first responders, but they don't have the equipment that our ambulances carry. So, I think you need to really consider that. The other thing, I think, is to deny this request for the people in the southern end of this town, at which time during the summer season, that population, I can't tell you, at least doubles, if not triples, is, that service is desperately needed in the southern end of town. I don't intend to muddy the waters, I didn't intend to speak here at all, but I just couldn't sit by and not say anything. So, I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you find in the right manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who else, could we just have folks who have not yet spoken, Mr. Cote, before you come up again? Is there anyone who wishes to speak who has not yet spoken this evening? Mr. Cote, you're up, I guess.
The reason I'm here tonight, and representing many people and the town, is that, yes, we care about everyone. And the data, the logistics, the engineering, that's how you meet the needs of the people. So, that's why I'm here. As far as the average five, I totally understand, from an engineering perspective, you engineer to the peak, and there'll be some days where maybe there's no calls, but I understand the average is just the average, I was just, that's just, it's a data point. One of the things that I did notice on the graph, was that between, there's a graph that, I don't know if it's all the calls, but it says between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m., that's where we exceeded the call threshold. During that time, we actually had the least number of calls. So, I was looking at that graph that Chief Stanley provided, we have the least number of calls between 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., and we're exceeding the threshold, so that didn't make sense to me. So, is there, is there another issue between, I know it's the early morning hours, but based on the data, between 11:00 and 2:00, there was at least three times as many calls, but the response time was six minutes. So, during the 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., is there a root cause? And that's my question on, because I didn't see the times that, the 16 minutes, the 17 minutes, the 15 minutes, I didn't see the time for those 53 calls. So, that would be helpful, because if we see it like between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m., this is the problem, then let's address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry or Ms. Hogan, would one of you like to answer that question, if possible?
So, I did have a conversation with Chief Stanley today about that specific question for Mr. Cote. We would really have to go back and dig a little deeper, but one of the items that he did point out was that is basically in the middle of the night, that is time where if the paramedics are not out and up already, that they're sleeping, that there may be a, maybe it's an extra minute that they need to get up, get out the door, that it may take a little bit more time. I'm sure there's other factors that are involved with that, I don't know what those are at this point, but certainly something that we could, we could take a closer look at. I can't, I can't speak to it any more than beyond, there may take a little more time, because the paramedics, if they're not out on our call, are sleeping, and would need to move a little bit.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Further comments, questions from board members? Hearing none, we do have a revised motion that we have received this evening, it, closing statement.
Please, if I could, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Thank you. Again, Margaret Hogan for the Union Fire District of South Kingston. I think it's important for me to state that we're not here to discuss whether it's a good idea or a bad idea for the town of South Kingston to choose to locate an EMS facility in that area of the town. We are here for land use issues. It's important that we remember that. This property is properly zoned, and we are here before you on a very basic application for site plan review. There are no building code violations, as was asserted by Mr. Cote. We are seeking two-dimensional variances from the zoning board of review, and when we appear before them, we will have a burden of proof that we need to meet. It's spelled out by state law and codified by the zoning ordinance of the town of South Kingston. The items that we seek relief from this board on have to do with landscaping issues, one of which is when you have a new development adjacent to a public road, public street, you need to have a barrier of landscaping across the front of your lot, clearly infeasible and inconsistent with the notion of public safety, vehicles emerging to respond to calls. So, let's keep our eyes on the ball, and on the focus of what it is that we're here for. In regards to, in regards to the fact that we've gone through multiple iterations of the plan, regretfully, I have to say, that falls into the category of no good deed goes unpunished. The Union Fire District and the town of South Kingston, in an effort to bend over backwards to meet the needs of abutting property owners, did everything they could to accommodate those. Nevertheless, nothing is ever enough, because the bottom line is, the folks down there don't want an additional EMS building in that area. They're entitled to their opinion, but at the end of the day, if they had simply said to us, regardless of what you do, we will never support this, we could have saved the taxpayers of the Union Fire District, as well as the town of South Kingston, substantial sums, and saved us an awful lot of time. It's unfortunate that it unfolded the way that it did, but the applicants shouldn't be punished for the fact that they bent over backwards trying to accommodate these needs. I would submit to this Planning Board respectfully, that this application has been thoroughly vetted. It's important to recall, in regards to the complaints or the concerns, if you will, about shrubbery on the site, that it is immediately adjacent to acres and acres and acres of open The need for the public safety expansion has been very eloquently presented by your interim town manager, and I would respectfully request again, that the board take note of the fact that you're not here to second-guess the town's decision to proceed with this application, you're here to judge it on the health, safety, welfare elements of the site plan, the noise, the light, the landscaping, the traffic, the drainage. You've heard expert witness testimony that is unrebutted, that the drainage on this site is improved. Not only is there no net increase, there's a net decrease of stormwater for this site. How many times have you ever heard that? Not too many, I would submit, and I've presented an awful lot of applications for site plan review over the years. I'm not going to belabor it, I would strongly urge this board to grant the requested waivers from the landscaping from your planning regulations, and to issue a positive advisory to the zoning board of review, and we will appear before that entity and present to them our burden of proof for the dimensional relief that we seek. Thank you very much for your time and attention, I know it's been a long time, and all of us take the time to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, we have a revised set of materials that includes a staff review, a technical review, and response, along with a draft motion that begins on page five. As we have received this revision this evening, I think it would be wise for you to go over it with the board, I doubt board members have had a chance to read all of it. Amy, close the public hearing, even though it's a development plan review, and technically not a standard public hearing.
Sure.
Peter, would you like to make that motion? Thank you, Peter, would someone like to second that? Josh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Jamie, if you could go through this document with us, you know how we love receiving things on the night of the meeting, however, we appreciate attention to detail in your revisions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will preface my review and comments, that the bulk of what you- I will preface my review and comments that the bulk of what you see before you was provided to you earlier. What we did in the last two days, including this afternoon, and, and conversations with council, is word smith and clarify a few items that were, were still debating in our minds as your professional staff as to the proper wording. So with regards, you have, in essence, an eight-page memo in front of you, and I'm going to focus on that memo, and we'll call it option one, with the initial seven conditions for the full build-out of the facility. The first page, which is labeled one of eight before you, and dated November 22nd, 2021, takes on the property characteristics, property description, parking, landscaping, utilities...
Excuse me, Jamie, can everyone hear Jamie? Yes, no? All right.
Wanted to make sure, sometimes a little soft spoken.
Thank you. The second page, again, continues on with utilities and drainage, and then there's a discussion on the waivers requested that has been subject to many discussions in front of the planning board, specific to street landscaping, perimeter landscaping, interior landscaping, and buffer landscaping, and those are called out in those sections. There are no changes in this over the last month. Regulatory considerations are called out in your subdivision and land development regulations, and those are contained on the top of page, bottom of page two and top of page three. With regards to contents on page three and four, there are technical review and applicant's responses to questions in our initial planning review. We have decision deadlines and required findings on page four. And then we get into the draft motion on page five. And I'm just going to read the first sentence and the verse full paragraph. "The town of South Kingstown Planning Board hereby grants advisory development plan approval to the Union Fire District for the Mattoonik Station 7 project, which includes the demolition of the existing fire station structure and the reconstruction of a 3,500 plus or minus square foot fire station and an 1,890 square foot auxiliary ambulance building and associated improvements on Assessor's Platte 86-2, Lot 32, located at 59 Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. Union Fire District of South Kingstown was the applicant and owner." There are specific findings of facts, A through E, excuse me, A through G, and then we have recommended conditions of approval that would be recommendations made to the zoning commission. As legal counsel has advised you, they are not binding, but strong suggestions that you would hope would be considered by that commission. Conditions of approvals, Madam Chair, I'm going to read through those so that everyone, you'll see the changes. Approval is conditioned upon the applicant obtaining the required variances from the zoning board of review associated with proposed parking configuration, i.e. parking dimensions and drive aisle width. Item number two, "The development of the site shall be in strict conformance with the approved site plan unless amended by these conditions of approval." And here's where we've modified some of the language slightly. "This favorable motion is associated with the use of the notably most building by the town of South Kingstown's Emergency Management Service," parentheses, EMS. "In the event that the building is not constructed for the use and/or occupation by the town of South Kingstown's EMS, all approvals with the reference building and associated improvements required by said building shall be retracted." Item three, there were no changes. "The applicant shall obtain all required local and state permits prior to commencing any site improvements and obtaining a certificated occupancy," a CO. Item four, there were no changes. "Any proposed signage must comply with the requirements established by Article 8 of the Town of South Kingstown Zordin Ordinance, and any future lighting considerations shall be dark sky compliant." Item number five has some slight modifications to it. "The applicant shall perform root pruning, non-mechanical, of any existing vegetation encountered between the western property boundary and the western side of the driveway." There's new language, which I'll read as follows. "A licensed arborist shall be on-site during the initial excavation activities along the easterly and westerly property boundaries associated with the construction of the access drive on the west side and the foundation slash footing on the east side to determine if any root pruning is required. If it is determined that root pruning is required, said pruning shall be supervised and/or performed by a licensed arborist." So that clarification on what the responsibilities and who is responsible for making the call on the root pruning has been added. Item number six, "The applicant shall provide fire protection utilities and services to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Services." There are no changes to that. Item number seven, "Conditions of this approval shall not limit the applicant's ability to modify the site plan in the following manner." We've attempted to clarify this at the end of this paragraph. "In the event that the second building is eliminated from the project, which is listed as Exhibit 1, the applicant shall be allowed to modify their site plan as it relates to parking, interior landscaping, drainage, and on-site wastewater treatment systems to accommodate the reduced building program, so long as the proposed modifications remain within the project's initial construction limits, which is Exhibit 2. If the proposed modifications reduce impervious area, building square footage, on-site wastewater treatment systems area, and stormwater retention areas, and do not reduce the, any of the proposed perimeter landscaping, then the applicant shall not be required to return to the planning board for a modified advisory development plan approval. However, any modifications to the approved plans associated with this application shall be reviewed and approved by the Building and Zoning Department in consultation with the town engineer and planning board's administrative officer. If the modification exceeds the provisions stated above, the applicant shall be required to return to the planning board for development plan review stipulated in Section 505.1D." So that lasts, in a success, section referencing 505.1D has been added. Item eight, "Is any other conditions deemed necessary by the planning board?"
Comments from board members on this initial draft? Jamie, I would suggest on condition number five, eliminate the "or" and just say "and" with regard to if it is determined that root pruning is required, said pruning shall be supervised and performed by a licensed arborist. Any other thoughts? I had a question for Jamie and probably Amy. Not really sure if something like this would belong within the conditions, but one of the, one of the comments that came up fairly regularly through this process was the speed along Mattoonik Beach Road. And wondering if there's a way that that can be communicated to the appropriate entity, whether it's the police department or a note to the zoning board that, given the fact that this will change the use in a certain way, it seems as though it would make sense for the town to make an effort to have a better enforcement on a regular basis of the speed along Mattoonik Beach Road.
Yeah, I would...
I don't know where that...
I would suggest a totally separate motion, because I think, and if, if this is approved, then a second motion would be in order, direct staff to draft correspondence to the council expressing that concern.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's, it's a good idea, given the comments that we heard and, you know, thinking about public safety and being as thorough as possible.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I would concur with, with legal counsel's guidance. I think a separate letter, given the testimony that was part of this proceeding, it would be germane to you as a board to perhaps send a separate letter to, perhaps Chief Ewan and CCing town council or vice versa, saying that it has come to our attention due to a proceeding that was just undertaken, that the neighbors surrounding the Union Fire District's existing facility has concerns about speed in the area, and if you could please look into this matter.
Sure. Thanks, Jamie and Amy.
That's Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, right?
Yes.
Yes, Mattoonik Schoolhouse.
I think there were discussions about Mattoonik Beach Road and Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, so the Mattoonik Union Fire District area.
Any other thoughts? Paul?
Just to be clear, we're not talking about limiting the speed of the rescues, it's just traffic enforcement in general.
Exactly. Susan?
Good.
All right. Anything else? Uh, if there are no other comments, would someone like to make the motion as amended?
I'll make that motion as amended. Yes.
Sorry, can I ask for some, sorry, could I ask for some clarification? We have page six, and then we have page seven. So it seems to be two options here?
Yes, so, so the, the one that we have discussed is on page five and page six.
We have not talked about the one on page seven.
No, we have not. We have not had any comments relative to the first motion. So, I'm assuming that there is agreement, unless you have some thoughts as well?
I think I'm, I'm, sorry, I think I need a minute just to read through it, because it came to us late tonight.
Yes.
But it looks like, what I'm understanding from page seven, is that this is a separate draft motion that would approve one of the plans, Exhibit 2, which approves the firehouse reconstruction without the EMS building.
Yes, Madam Chair, in response to Susan Axelrod's question, staff tried to anticipate any potential discussions that would have, be had between the planning board members if you were to contemplate that scenario. So we were being cautious and conservative in preparing language, so that you wouldn't ask us on the fly this evening to prepare language in that manner.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And do you have comments related to that?
Can I have a moment to just read through it really quick?
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
Sorry.
Are you good? Any thoughts?
I do have a thought. So the second motion here, which is to approve the reconstruction of the firehouse, I'm very comfortable with, and I understand the necessity to upgrade and improve the firehouse. I am less, I'm less comfortable approving the EMS station as it's been presented to the board. I would, I think be hopeful that a plan could be presented that didn't pave the vast majority of the site, eliminate setbacks, eliminate landscaping, eliminate buffers, and require so many waivers from this board. And I wonder if I am alone on this board, or if there are other members of the board who are, have reservations also approving the EMS project as it has been presented.
Thanks, Susan. Thoughts from board members?
I present my thoughts, which unfortunately, contrary to Susan's. I said it last meeting, I'll say it again this meeting. I think that the fight upon the EMS is a critical community function. There's a reason why government and institution are allowed in areas that are surrounded by residential, and that is because of the important function that they, they perform. Unfortunately, I think that this process has more to lie a little bit. The question in front of this board is not whether that is the appropriate location for the EMS or not. I think it's, for a whole host of reasons, that's, that's not in front of us. I mean, some of which is that we have experts that's telling us that that is the appropriate location. And I just want to point out that those experts are not necessarily a private contractor doing this for profit. They're members of our community, they're some paid, some unpaid, they're dedicating their life and their career in helping out the community, and I trust when they tell us that that is the, that's the right location. With that said, I support the motion one, which allows for the EMS, or if the EMS is granted, allows for the remaining project to go forward. I think it's another group, whether that be the town council or the zoning board, that will make that decision on the EMS. So what we're doing is not necessarily taking that decision, but allowing the plan that we have to go forward if that decision is made in that direction. So for that reason, I support the motion as an option one.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I, I agree with Joe. I think, you know, in approving the first option, we still don't know if the building will ever be built or not, we're just saying that it's possible. Again, we've been told what our role is in this, it's advisory to zoning. I don't think that the variances requested are extreme in any way, and I'm, I'm comfortable going forward with option one.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else wishes to comment? I would say that I agree with you as well. Obviously, this is a constrained site. Very few sites are actually perfect. The applicant has made, I think, quite a good faith effort in making modifications to the plan. Again, we understand full well that if we do not make the final decision, we are advisory in nature, we do not determine whether the need is there, we appreciate all the data that we have been given. If there are no other comments, would someone like to make a motion for the revised draft? Oh, Josh?
I'm, I, in agreement, but adding also that, you know, I had, I do see how this went a little in a loop, and, and we had the Fire District have to propose multiple sort of things, and, and it would have been nice to potentially have avoided that, but what can you do? I mean, at this point, this is what's being proposed to us. I think, I agree that the, the Fire District has done excellent work, and their, their professionals who put in the work have done excellent work to think through in the constraints of this site, what can be done and what can't be done. So I also support the, the first option of the motion.
Thanks, Josh.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, Susan.
Sorry, I'd like to ask a question, I think of staff. If we approve the first motion as it stands now, can the site plans be changed to say move buildings or reduce, like, can the site itself be changed, or are we locking in something here?
Do you, and again, we... And again, we tried to... Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, we tried to craft language on your advisory review to the zoning commission that allows slight modification within, in essence, their construction limits. So if it went to the zoning board and the zoning board said, you know, it would be better if the EMS building was slightly smaller or had one less bunk room, that the Union Fire District would not be required to come back to the planning board for design review. It cannot expand beyond the limits of what they're showing. That would require them to come back to you. But it could get smaller. So they could take pavement and make it impervious versus pervious and not have to come back to the planning board. But if they proposed to add an additional parking space, which added pervious pavement, they would have to come back to you under the language contained in our motion.
As you noted in the draft motion, if, for whatever reason, an agreement is not reached between the town and the EMS, there could be changes to the plan relative to setbacks, landscaping, and so on, and that's clearly indicated in the motion, which I think is...
And that's why we've motioned, we reference Exhibit One and Exhibit Two, because Exhibit Two represents a schematic associated with the removal of the EMS building and how that would play out on a site plan.
Any additional comments from board members? I'd entertain a motion. Joe?
The South Kingston Planning Board hereby grants advisory development plan approval to the Union Fire District for the Mattoonik Station Seven project, which includes the demolition of the existing fire station structure and reconstruction of a new 3,500-square-foot fire station with a 1,890-square-foot auxiliary ambulance building and associated improvements on Assessors Platte 86-2, Lot 32, located at 59 Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, Union Fire District of South Kingston. Applicant-owner development plan approval for this application is based upon the site plan entitled "Union Fire District of South Kingston, Station Seven, Mattoonik 49, Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, Assessors Platte 86-2, Lot 32, Sheet Two of Nine Site Plan, dated July 2021, revisions through October 26, 2021. From Joe Casali, Engineering, Inc., 300 Post Road, Warwick, Rhode Island, O2888. This approval is based upon the following findings of fact and conditions of approval." Findings of fact, A through G, and conditions of approval, one through seven, with condition five amended with the discussion tonight.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Peter.
Madam Chair? Just... Go ahead.
Clarity for the public, that's option one with the EMS building.
And just for clarification, the plans that are referenced are revised through October 26, 21. Exhibit One shows the relationship of those new setbacks, where the building orientation was slightly modified.
So just for clarification, that is the option with the EMS building. However, the conditions of approval that we discussed of allows for the project to go forward if the EMS building is not approved by others?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I just have a quick question. On the conditions of approval, did Joe just add it in the approval condition about traffic?
That's going to be a separate, we discussed...
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's going to be a separate letter. Any further comments? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion carries. Second motion, if the board agrees to sending a letter to... Amy, would it be appropriate Town Council with the Police Department CC'd or vice versa?
I would send it to the council and CC the police chief.
All right. Relative to Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road and enforcement of speed as discussed, I'm sure Jamie can come up with appropriate language.
Madam Chair, we feel perfectly comfortable if the board members feel comfortable with staff preparing a letter for the chairperson's signature related to that subject matter.
Very good. Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion from Peters. Second from Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda, unless there are any other comments from Planning Director or board members. Oh, TRC, the date of which is...
TRC, I'll have to pull up that date, but just a quick update. I did receive some language recently from Horsley Witten on the next component of the missing middle. I have some schematics from Union Studios, so potentially I would like to place that on your January work session agenda.
Sounds good. Once we figure out the date for TRC, we'll want a volunteer. We wouldn't want to disappoint Jay.
I keep falling down on this one. I'll volunteer, but I really need to know the date.
You are a brave soul indeed. Thank you.
And for my benefit, please, can we confirm the meetings in December? Because I think they're a little bit different.
Yeah.
Yes, I know, we have a special meeting coming up, South County Hospital, and that is on the 2nd of December.
So Madam Chair, we have a special meeting on December 2nd. TRC is scheduled for the 8th, and we can either hold that at 9:00 a.m. or typically 1:00 p.m. or slightly after that.
It's always on a Wednesday, though.
It's always on a Wednesday.
Seems to keep coinciding with Scenic Highway Review Board, which is what trips me up every time.
That's the second Wednesday of the month. And then you have your only, in essence, planned meeting on December 14th, which was typically reserved as a work session, but would function as your regularly scheduled meeting with no work session items contained on it.
Is it, if it's too difficult for you, Joe said he would...
And could you just send out an email with all those dates and...
It was the...
Madam Chair, to answer Mr. Jordan's questions, we'll send out a reminder of the meeting schedule for December, so everybody has that fresh in their mind.
So at the moment, we're on for the 2nd, the TRC is the 8th, and then potentially 14th for either a regular session or a work session, depending on...
14th in all likelihood would be a regular session. If nine o'clock works for you the best, Joe? Nine o'clock, it is.
I just looked up the agenda for the Scenic Roadways Board, December 2nd at 1:00.
So in theory, Paul...
Okay, so I'm good for nine o'clock on the...
Paul Jordan.
We hope.
Thank you, Paul. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.